All right, everyone. Welcome to Special Town Council Work Session, town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, September 12th, 2022. Roll, please.
Councilmember McGuire.
Present.
Here.
Councilmember Morris.
Present.
Councilmember Roy.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Bunch.
All here, all present in the county farm, one form or another. Mr. Ford, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Jesus, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's see here. Action item, general agenda item, presentation by Willdan Financial Services and Walk Consulting LLC and discussion on draft water and wastewater rate and capacity fee study for the Cave Creek Water Desert Hills Water and Cave Creek Wastewater Systems, placed on the agenda by the town manager.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you for joining us to for the second work session to discuss the revisions that we the the document calling the rate study. Kevin Burnett from Willdan is on Zoom and will be giving a presentation discussing how we addressed your questions and concerns from the last meeting and the changes that we've made. Also in the audience is Jim Strickland, who is our financial consultant. He is on the left, if you're looking at them, and on the right is Tim Stratton, who is our bond counsel with Gus Rosenfeld. The way the rates are structured and some of the questions you had and may still have do affect how we would go forward with future bonding. And so we've asked that we we can cover the financial terms of the rates that cover the debt service coverage and things like that that will affect. That's why the the structure of the rates of study is set this way for the future bonding. We can discuss that with Jim and then any legal questions. Tim will be able to address. And of course, Sean Cruz, Vice, and our utility director is here as well as Sherwood Cox, our financial director. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin.
All right. All right. Thanks, Kerry. So I've got a brief presentation that I want to share with you all today. It's certainly not as long or as in-depth as the as the last one was. We more so wanted to hit on the questions of what we heard last time and the changes that were made based on the feedback that we received from the last council meeting, but certainly if you have other questions or additional thoughts have come up, please let us know. So with that, we wanted to go through what we heard at the last meeting, some revised financials for the Cave Creek Water System, some revised rates for both the Cave Creek and Desert Hill Systems, and then we've got next steps as part of our formal agenda. But again, if you have additional questions or thoughts, please let us know as we move through the presentation. So with that, we had three main questions that we addressed based on the feedback that we got from the last meeting. The first one being, can the rate revenue increases be lowered from what we presented to you previously? The second one being, can the base charges be more equalized like they are currently? And then the third thing that we heard was that conservation is important and that the higher tier rate should not be lower than what they currently are, which was the case in our last iteration. So we'll go through each of these talking points or our feedback items that we got and let you know what changes we've made and hopefully solicit some more feedback from you all on them. So the first question was, can the rate revenue increases be lowered? And in one case, the answer that we came up with was yes, and the other two, the answer was no. So starting with the Desert Hill System, as we looked at the financials in the last meeting, the rate revenue increases that we needed on the Desert Hill System was to maintain the self sustainability of the utility. There was a dip in the fund balance last time to the point where the fund actual fund balance actually went negative if we didn't increase rates the way we had recommended in the plan. So we didn't make any changes based on any changes from the last meeting to the Desert Hill System because we needed those rate revenue increases in order to maintain the financial integrity of the of the Desert Hill System and make sure that it was paying its own way. On the wastewater system, as we discussed last time, the rate revenue that's being generated currently isn't enough to pay the annual operations and maintenance expenses. So we developed a plan that those rate revenues will exceed O and M expenses over time. That's not currently projected to occur until 2028. So any decrease that we made to the wastewater rate revenue now would just extend that point in time before revenues were sufficient to cover their operations and maintenance expenses. So we didn't make any revisions to that one. On the Cave Creek System, the Cave Creek Water System, we did make some revisions to the rate revenue increases that we proposed last time. I believe towards the end of the last council meeting when we all met, we we discussed that there were some options potentially looking at a double pledge of debt service coverage between Cave Creek Water System rates and Desert Hills Water System rates. So that that might be able to get a stronger debt service coverage ratio, which would allow us to come back a little bit on the rate revenue increases for the Cave Creek System in working with Jim Strickland. We did look at some different options with that. So we do have some lower rate revenues to propose to you on the Cave Creek side, which I'll get to in a minute. Just some of the other points that we have here on the slide. What we're trying to achieve between the two systems, the the Cave Creek Water System revenue and the Desert Hills Water System revenue is a 1.50 times max annual debt service coverage. The hope in getting to this is that as we issue with a debt for the Phoenix Interconnect Project, if we exceed the 1.5 times max annual debt service coverage, then we would not have to fund a debt service reserve. So that was the goal in trying to get to that 1.5 coverage. So we were even with that, we were able to lower rate revenue increases a little bit, but we still have that 1.5 target in mind. So with that, the the slide that I've got up now shows what the proposed rate revenue increases were last time we met. And then what we've done now. So the first year, the 11% dropped down to 9%. The second year, the 5% is now a four. The 2425 went from three to four, and then we're at 33. So we came down a little bit in the first two years. We had to go up one in the third year. And then you can see what the max annual debt service coverage is. So in 2223, we're just barely above that 1.5 target that we're talking about. And if we were to to reduce that 9% down to even an 8%, we would no longer hit that 1.5 times coverage. So the 9% was as low as we we felt we could go. You can see the coverage jumps up in 202324 with the additional rate increase there, and then it dips down in 2425. That's because we're anticipating a new debt issuance in 2425 to help with the water treatment plant upgrade. So we wanted to to do some modeling to factor in some debt funding for that to help keep rates lower going forward. So you do see that little bit of a dip in that third year there. But then they the the coverage increases again in 2526 and 2627. So once we have the rate increases factored in for those years. The second question or item that we had was, can the base charge be equalized? And what we were talking about there was currently the three quarter inch and the one inch meter base charges are the same. So you can see we had proposed last time around that the five eighths and three quarter inch rate would be the same, but that the one inch would be higher than what the the three quarter inch is. So we made some revisions. So we've now got it set so that the proposed one inch is the same as the three quarter inch rate, which is also the same as the five eighths inch rate. So that we've got that applying to both Desert Hills and Cave Creek Systems. So we're we're sticking with the current approach that the the town has now. And then, once you get beyond the one inch size, then those base charts will increase based on the on the meter size. The third thing that we heard and incorporated into this also was there was some discussion about having the same rate for single family and multifamily customers. And then the second half of that was we heard that conservation is important to the town. So whereas we had the higher tier rates went down compared to what they currently are. In the last iteration, we've made some modifications to that so that the the charges going forward for the upper tiers are either the same or a little bit higher than what they are currently. So we've got here that the Cave Creek Single Family and Cave Creek Multifamilies, we've set those rates the same based on what we heard last time. We've got the rates in the first two tiers have gone down from where we were at last time. So it's going to provide a little bit more benefit to the smaller volume users. And then we've increased the charges in the upper tiers to help encourage conservation and that the larger users, the more water they use, the more water that they would pay. And we've got that set for for all classes. So we've got, we did the same thing for commercial. We did the same thing for the common areas and irrigation class. And then we did that for the commercial pools class as well. So with that brief overview, these are what our next steps are that we've got set out. So September 19th would be adopting the notice of intent to raise rates. November 21st would be the public hearing to adopt water race, water and wastewater utility rates. That would be the first reading of the ordinance for new capacity fees. And then December 5th would be the second reading on the ordinance to adjust the capacity fees. As we went back and looked at things, we determined it wasn't necessary to have two readings for the water and sewer rates only for the capacity fees. And then the new rates would be effective January 4th. So as I said, a much shorter, much more condensed presentation than what we had last time, but certainly we want to still get your feedback and your thoughts based on the change that we've made since we last all met.
Vice Mayor.
I took a look at the proposed changes. And I have one relatively simple question. And that is, the newly proposed rates would reduce my average water bill by $10 a month. And I I figure I'm about at the average. I use 16,000 gallons a month. The concern I had, well, also, the originally proposed rate increases would have increased my bill by $25 a month. So that's this proposal is $35 a month different for me alone. If you look at, say, 1,000 people in town, I don't know how many there are really on the water system, but I think it's more than 1,000. That adds up to over a year, $420,000 that is being set aside. This year, we have almost a million dollar subsidy from the general fund to Cave Creek Water. So now we're up to about a million and a half dollars difference. The question, my main question is, is there enough expected income from the higher rates for very high users to offset that almost million and a half dollars?
Based on the modeling that we've done, we believe the answer is yes, and that's in part from the increase in the base charge for the larger meters. There's a fairly significant increase there. So for example, we've got the one and a half inch meter is currently at $141.79 a month. In the last iteration, it was only going to go up by a little under $3. We've now got the one and a half meter inch meter going up by $58 a month. So we're recouping some of that revenue from from that group. And then, as well as some of these other customer classes, like the commercial pools, we've got some increases to their to their bills is what their rates as well. So on the whole, we believe that we are going to meet our revenue target as has been identified in the financial plan through the new rates that we're showing to you all today.
Okay. Thank you. Right. That's on the assumption that the people who have the larger connections and the higher usage will continue that usage that they they have in the past.
Yes, that that's a fair point and a valid point to make. We did incorporate some some elasticity of demand into the upper tiers of the rate structures so that we are assuming that there will be some conservation as a result of the higher rates and that there will be some scale back on water use. So we're not we're not counting on everybody using the same amount of water as they have previously. We're making the assumption that there will be some water scaling back. So we factored that into into the analysis as well.
But there will be rate increases in subsequent years.
Correct. Yes.
This is just an opinion, my opinion, that taking the existing rates that we have now and reducing them and then jacking them up again a year or so from now is not especially when we're substantially increasing the rates for Desert Hills. It doesn't, to me, it doesn't send the kind of a signal for concern about water utilization that I think the town should be sending, especially in the present, what's going on at the present time as exemplified by the meeting that we're going to have tomorrow, where we take a look at what the existing water situation is and what it may be in the near future. Thank you.
Councilman Silva.
Yeah, I've got, I need some clarifications. And then I have some questions. My one question to start with is you need the two readings, as I just heard, for the capacity fees, which would, if approved, put the rate in effect January 4th. I'm assuming that since only I heard one reading is necessary for the water and sewer rates, that still would become effective on the same date, January 4th.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Silva, yes, they'll be effective January 4th. The difference is that the capacity fees are in the town code, and so they're required to be changed by ordinance. The rates for water are not in the town code. They are adopted by resolution that does not require two readings.
Thank you. Next question, questions is for our utility director. Sean, how many proximate users do we have on the sewer plant right now? Is it about 700?
No, American Councilmembers, we actually have just under 900.
900.
Sewer users.
My question is, at the rate of growth that's shown in this report for sewer tap-ons over the years, what's the break even point for users for that plant to be operating to where it's providing enough dollars coming, revenue coming in to cover the operation and maintenance of it?
Well, Mayor Council, this is actually one of the things that we're looking with the new rates to increase the the base and wow, the sewer enterprise fund to be fully an enterprise fund. So it's a, I'm not sure if Kevin, it doesn't happen first year, but it happens within the five years of the study, correct?
Correct. We've got it set at 2028 right now between new customers coming online and the proposed revenue increases.
And that takes into account two things. Number one, that the loans for that plant will be paid off, I believe, in about five, five and a half years. We'll have that principal and interest to use for some. Then, secondly, we still have or would not have the half a percent sales tax going to that use to sewer plant. How was that, I guess, refresh my memory. How was all that? When you stir it all up, take it into account, given what the rates are proposed today?
Yeah, Mayor Council. So the half cent sales tax, which is currently being set aside and being used to pay for the debt service on the 2010 expansion of the plant. We're not considering that, and we're not trying to keep that. So that'd be separate funding. It's just being used to pay the debt service on that expansion. What we're looking at is to make this an enterprise fund just for operations, not including the debt service. There is some future debt service that's included in the calculations, but not the existing debt service in the system. So what we're looking for in the next five years is to generate enough revenue from the existing users as well as the few new ones that will come system to make the system a true enterprise self, self supporting fund, not taking into account the debt that was incurred in 2010 to really relocate the plant.
And then I forget what page it was on, but it was line A10. And in two reports, and this would be relative to the Cave Creek Sewer and Water for the additional proposed estimated tap-ons that we'd be getting. And if I've done the math right, I've taken the proposed capacity fees that are in this latest report. And I looked at the dollar amounts and divided one with the other. And in doing that, I show that the sewer for 23 is approximately, we're estimating 24 units to be hooked up to our sewer plant. And then for 25, or I'm sorry, 24 and 25, that unit goes down, that count goes down to approximately 14 dwelling units per year. And then with the water, I did the same thing. I took the totals on line 10, divided it by the proposed capacity fee increases. And I show that it'd be about 40 tap-ons for our water for next year. And then that goes up in 24 and 25 to approximately 63, 64 units a year. Are those numbers fairly, do you feel those numbers to be fairly realistic based on what you know today, the economy, etc.?
We do, and that estimate goes back a little bit in time. And the difference between the two is because the service boundaries of the two different systems, the wastewater system is a much more confined system. We have opportunity to get a lot less new customers connected on to it. So the water system being larger, there's potential for more connections. We have a lot in the town. We don't have as many neighborhood subdivision connections, but we have a lot of single family connections, custom home builds, which a lot of the cases don't connect to. That's the difference between the two. But yeah, those numbers, we could take a back look at it. We did work with our both the building safety and the the planning staff to come up with what we expected to be numbers for growth within the the two different service boundaries in effect.
Okay, so they've been looked at, reviewed, and felt to be reasonable. Yes, as a guest today.
Like as an example, we have Hidden Canyon, Hightown Hall here. So that's going to be coming on, but it's going to take a number of years to absorb those units. There are existing sewer connections that can happen in Stagecoach Pass Estates. We're starting to see some development pick up in that area. So, you know, we we thought those numbers were realistic. We could look at them again, but give you some more details on where we think it's going to occur. It is a bit of a roll of the dice. We don't know exactly what's going to occur five years from now and what absorption will have. Right now, we're still getting some absorptions in Galloway Ridge because I don't think they're all fully connected to the system or fully active. In fact, there are the developer accounts. So.
Okay. Like our good vice mayor here, I also pulled out my water bills. And mine is about what his is, except for one big difference. Mine covers water and sewer. So he's using an awful lot of water.
I agree.
I'm using, well, I I figured about 2,000 gallons a month. I don't go above that, but my current billing, and I think this is useful for people in the audience and watching this on. There's a lot of information in our packet. There's tremendous amount of numbers and information. It's very complicated, cumbersome, hard to follow. So I I think the people in town want to know what's my bill going to go up to if these rates get passed? And as I say, I'm rounding this off. I'm currently paying about $124. And that's including the fees and the taxes and about 2,000 gallons a month. Under the prior proposed rate structure, it would have gone up to about $142 a month. And now with the current proposed structure we're looking at, it goes up again a hunt to about $153. So basically, I'm looking at what was going to be about an 18% overall increase to about a 29% increase. And obviously, to reiterate, that's with both water and sewer, and that's with low usage. So I just wanted to point that out for the people looking at this, that that's the basic bottom line and that the folks in Desert Hills, you know, their water base, you know, actually is up in the be about, what is it, 28% increase versus what would have been a 33% increase. So I think it's important to also point out that it's my understanding that we haven't had a water rate increase for approximately two years, correct, John? And that we have not had an increase in our sewer rates in approximately 10 plus years, correct?
Mayor Council believes sewer rates were adjusted, last time adjusted was 2009.
Nine, so it's even longer. So I think it's important, whatever rate structure is approved, that the town look at as needed, increasing rates in a more timely fashion. I would have hoped that so the rates in the sewer haven't gone up for 13 years. Had we raised it a little bit every two or three or even four years, we wouldn't be looking at a base increase of roughly $54 a month to $81 a month. And I think that's a better way to manage our expenses and our revenues to do it in a more timely fashion. So that would be a suggestion of mine moving forward. That's about it for now, Mr. Mayor.
If I can add to that, American Council, one thing we would like to do is we will post, we've actually got some spreadsheets that show the differences between current and users. So we'll be posting that information on the town's website. So if someone can look at that, we've talked about the idea of having a rate calculator so someone could plug in there. At least having the base the average users and low water user, etc. We provide that information. It's great. And one of the things that we were looking to do with the resolutions when this comes back to council was actually asked to adopt not just one years, but potentially at least two, if not more years of rates. I believe council has the authority to do that. So we don't have to keep coming back every year, and we have that built into our base budgets, but that's up to council's purview.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, and that is why we have our financial consultant and bond counsel here. Having the the study is is set up that you could adopt all five years. And that allows you, I believe, in the future, they would be able to answer the question probably clearer than I could is to lower rates. If you wanted to increase your rates, you have to have a study. But in terms of funding for future capital projects, having that set revenue and knowing what your finances are going to look like for your enterprise funds is important. And again, it sets that threshold, you know, so that we have the debt ratio coverage needed when we're applying for loans. So that's something you need to seriously consider when adopting, not doing one or two years, looking at the entire study and adopting, you know, four to five years. You can continue to review the the rates and you can make adjustments in the future, but if you needed to raise them, you'd have to do a study.
Councilmember Roy.
My concern is regarding the next steps. So on September 19th, which is what we today, we're going to adopt the notice of intent to raise the rates. But then two months pass until November 21st. But then two months pass until November twenty-first. When we, at the same meeting, I'm in, I'm assuming, are going to conduct the public hearing. And adopt the water and wastewater utility rates. Is that true?
That is a required process. Additional meetings are always welcome and we are currently working on our webpage for the rates. To establish um, the ability to inform the residents and, and do a whole campaign on the information. And if we can set up uh, the site so that uh, customers can go and enter in their information to get. To see what their rates are. Um, but yeah, there's a whole campaign that, that needs to occur um, with notification. But you can have additional meetings if you'd like.
Well, and that's my point, and we did it for the budget. Um, because the optics to having a public hearing and then approving what we're talking about on the same meeting. Uh, makes to me appear like we're rubber stamping. People can't come to the meeting and object to anything significantly for us to change. Because we're going to, we're going to adapt the water and wastewater utility rates at that same meeting. So my, my preference would be to have a separate meeting for the public.
So the, the purpose of the work sessions is to work through the actual study. Once you adopt the sixty-day notice. Um, thirty days before the public hearing, we're required to post the report and that's the final report. So that becomes public and anytime um, after that, between the posting of that and, and the public hearing. You can have additional um, public sessions to discuss that, because you'll have a final document that you're, you're looking at. So um, you know, we, we can schedule an additional meeting.
It's true, you know, up to this council, but my preference would be. To give the public its due respect and a separate meeting for them to fully understand what's coming. And for them, for us to have some interaction.
Can I make a comment?
Well, I'm kinda going through everybody here. Yeah, go right ahead.
Well, there. I believe that they're at the motion three members of the public in the audience today. There were about that many when we went over this a couple of weeks ago. There is copious opportunity for people to take a look at what's coming down the. Line from the uh, the council in its decision-making. I'm, I'm sure that uh, Mr. Phelps will be commenting on this. Other people may comment. But it's not like there are a hundred and fifty people out here that are clamoring for more information.
Well, when they hear that their water rates are going to increase nine percent at a minimum, I think we would have more people in the audience. I think it's our due diligence and it doesn't matter if there's one person or thirty.
Well, since I won't be around at the time that the final decisions are made on this. Uh, all I'll say is if people, if people don't show interest as. Uh, events are transpiring. And I seen this before. I worked with organizations where there's a due date or something. And in, in every single instance. A few days before the due date, I would get people going, oh my God, how can I get this done in by the due date? I said, well, you had three months to do it. Well, it's, it's unfortunately the same thing.
No, it really isn't, because Kerry's told us that they're going to do a public information campaign online, which will help educate people about. This, these decisions. So I think that interest will be increased over the next two months.
Well.
And I'm an advocate.
Uh, November twenty-first will be a telling day then. If, if we have the same number of people in the audience on November twenty-first, then. And what happens on the fifth will be what happens on the fifth. Sorry.
That's okay. I mean, we're both entitled to our opinions. Mine is to. Provide as much public information and input as possible and yours is not.
Reg?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for uh, Bond Council with regard to uh, debt service coverage. Of the town's outstanding debt. Is any of that debt um, revenue bonds? Or is any of the debt full faith and credit bonds? And in either case, the required reserves that the bond requires?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilmember, um, your debt, um, it would not be classified as general obligation debt. Because they are payable from the uh, from the revenues of the system. So uh, it's not a, it's not a revenue bond per se, but uh, it is, uh, the revenues are clipped. The uh, to the bonded indebtedness, the, the WIFA loans uh, and, and such.
Was there not a case that the revenues were deemed insufficient? I seem to recall that.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Strickland to, to join since he uh, is the, the financial.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jim Strickland, financial advisor to Cave Creek. When I got hired a, a number of years back, um, I was looking at doing this intercept project. And I looked at your financial statements and it hadn't met coverage. You were less than one point two times on one of your issues. And that's when you did your rate study. Um, but you only did a rate study that resulted in an increase sufficient to meet that minimum coverage. So at that time, you increased rates, um, and uh, we started talking to WIFA about a new loan. And the general conclusion was that you had sufficient revenue for your existing debt, but not for additional debt. In the interim time, I took a loo- a look at all eight of your WIFA loans. Four of those loans had a pledge of repayment of your excise tax and sales tax. Four of them had utility revenue pledges. The ones that had excise taxes, um, we, we um, determined that. Based on the amount of excess tax you're generating, there were sufficient coverage in excess of two percent. That we could petition with, uh, we wrote them a letter and asked their board to release those requirements of you, and they did. And that's when we released your reserves back to the general fund. Um, at, at the same time, two of those four issues, we could refinance. And we did, and we lowered the rate and we placed those with US Bank as bank loans with the excise tax pledge. The um, and then on uh, 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 early twenty-one. Just say early fiscal twenty-two, um, we refinanced the third excise tax loan with uh, Zion's Bank. And save money there and there's no reserve on any of those four issues. Uh, your four issues that have utility pledge, um, they, um, they have a reserve. That's equal to about approximately one point eight times or a million. Um, that you consistently uh, currently are required to maintain. In looking at the preliminary study, um, I had some discussions with staff and with Will Dan about. Um, the amount of coverage, knowing that in, unlike on an excise tax pledge where they want two times coverage. They're willing to release a reserve if you can get to one and a half times coverage and maintain it. So in looking at the initial numbers on the Cave Creek utility alone, based on the increases, sometimes you went above and sometimes you went below. You didn't, you didn't maintain above one and a half times. And so I asked Will Dan um, and staff if we could take a look at combining those pledges. Because the Desert Hill pledge would, has excess capacity, uh, if you're going to raise that and you're not gonna issue debt against it. It would have excess capacity. If we combine the pledges only for purposes of the loan, the bond borrowing, not for repayment. Not, not to change anything that you're doing accounting-wise or um, you know, with your relationship with the customers. Your rates or charges, just for the legal pledge. If we combine the two, could we release the current one point eight million? And do the new nine point five without uh, reserve? Because right now that you're gonna be required to fund a reserve at one-fifth of your annual payment over a five-year period. And so uh, with the adjustments that have been requested, um, uh, last meeting. And uh, the discussions that I've had with staff and with Will Dan, um, you saw that, that they showed us. That we could achieve above one and a half times coverage. On my meeting today, I um, had a call with the executive director of WIFA to ask about that information. That had been shared with me that I passed on to them, and they said they would consider it. And they would also consider your future rate increases as being effective if you adopt them. So if you raise your rates for one year, they're gonna give you credit for one year. If you raise them for five years, they're gonna give you credit for five. If you do it for two, they're gonna give you credit for two, when they look at your coverage and your ability to repay. And to maintain coverage above one and a half times, because it's not gonna do you any good if you get above one and a half times and then go back down. Then you're gonna have to fund a reserve fund again. And so we don't, we want to avoid that. Um, does that answer your question?
That's very helpful. Thank you.
I knew we're getting you. Councilman Morris, uh, oh, excuse me, Mayor-elect Morris.
First of all, I'm gonna, uh, I agree with David's comment on the. Number one is the rates going down and coming back up. That just does not make sense. I know, not to argue with Kevin, because he's always right. We have about eighty, eighty-five percent of our customers are in that residential five eighths to one inch range. And uh, it, uh, I just don't see how we can lower rates next year. Um, and then raise them back up. So there's something wrong with that. I don't know what it is. But I gotta be convinced it's right, because I learned a long time ago dealing numbers, you don't let things that don't make sense lie there unexplained. They always bite you. And so I'm gonna need an explanation on why that, um, why those rates are so low. When we got a nine percent increase in revenue. It, it, it just doesn't uh, seem right to me. So that's one issue. And the other issue, I agree with David, they should be smooth. There should be no dip. Low one year, high the next, low one year. We need some consistency. Uh, so we're not explaining all these things, because it can't be explained, I don't think, but. Um, other than the normal variation of the town's finances. So those are my comment there. Uh, my other comment on Catherine's additional meeting, um, I, this is really technical, confusing. Stuff. It really is. And we have to think about the opinion of, of our constituency and explain it. There are reasons why these things are happening. Most of them external, that we have no control of. And um, the, the billion and a half dollars from Carefree, for example, spread over forty-two hundred customers. You can work that out to twenty bucks a, a month, a person, just by itself. Those things, we need a PR piece to this that takes into account the confusion, the casualties. And not done with this kind of stuff, but done with. Higher level things that anybody can understand. That, that's my opinion. So, getting on the real stuff, define debt service. What's the numerator?
It's principal and interest that's paid annually.
The numerator is principal and interest. What's the denominator?
For coverage calculations? Okay, um, the um, it's pledged revenue available for debt service. So, so there's two tests that you have for your covenants. There's your annual coverage where you're maintaining and you're able to demonstrate to WIFA. That you have sufficient revenue to make your payments and that requirement is a one point two times minimum coverage.
Well, I, you, when you say coverage, I, I'm.
Okay, so yes. Principal interest and you divide it by the pledged revenue.
P and I divided by pledged revenue. Now, what is pledged revenue?
Revenue is typically the excess available for debt service.
The excess over expenses.
It over direct expenses.
Direct expenses.
Not indirect expenses.
Okay.
So typically, in each of your bond issues, there is a specific definition that the lawyers can speak to and that they develop. And that, that's what you're required to deal with. And then engineers and finance people, um, we, we try to, you know, adhere to what those definitions are. Based on, on the words that are in the documents. But those typically are direct expenses are taken away from your gross revenues. And then you have net available for debt service as the denominator.
Okay, so let, let me uh, feed that back to you. We have P and I on top.
Yes.
On the bottom, we have, I'm gonna disassociate these, P and I plus a revenue stream that we've got to achieve. That covers, that makes sure that that ratio comes out to one point five percent.
Okay, your minimum coverage is one point two e- every year. If you, if, if during the analysis, and, and this is determined either by the market or it's determined by WIFA. That you're doing really well and you're in excess of one point two minimum, then you don't need a reserve. That's their policy. That if you can achieve above one point five times, so you have more revenue as a denominator and that gives you a better ratio. So um, if you have a million dollars of debt service and a million dollars of revenue, you've covered it one time. If you have a million of debt service and you have more than a million, you're above one.
And since we try to break even pretty much, uh, generally, uh, we've got to add enough money in there, which I presume is gonna go into reserves. Into our fund balance. So we will be, it should be increasing fund balance during this period. Is that, is that correct too? Maybe I'm asking our, our people then. It's a, let's call it a profit.
Well, it, it's, it is, or it is less of a subsidy. So I think that that is the direction that you guys are trying to go is have self-sufficient utilities. And so typically what happens in, in the case of being self-sufficient, then it's a surplus. And you typically um, are looking at repair replacement funds that increase, you know, money's set aside for future projects. You accumulate the cash and pay for projects out of, you pay as you go versus borrowing again in the future. So there's different ways of looking at it, but in your case, I think what you're trying to do is make the utility self-sustaining by producing excess revenue. That is actually covering your operating expenses.
So we will, we will have an increasing fund balance. Is that correct? I'm asking town now.
Yes, but just keep in mind, it takes time to build that. And we're currently, this fiscal year and next fiscal year, we're relying on ARPA funding to sort of fill that gap. So we're sort of self-sufficient now.
Yeah.
But we have in, we have revenues coming in that will go away. So it, it will take some time to build the extra revenue to be able to set that aside.
Now, the alternate case is to have a reserve. Was that evaluated? So if we have reserve, how much would that reserve need to be?
Um, Mayor, members of the council, there's, just like we talked about your annual coverage. There's other coverages and I'll come back to that. Uh, so you have uh, an additional bonds test that's gonna be based on your maximum annual debt service in the future. So when you combine all your debt, you may not, when you start to layer it, there may be a year where it's much greater. And that's the coverage, not today's coverage, because we're looking at doing two years of interest only. So our today's coverage is gonna be better than um, if you take into account three or some hour, four years more. But we, um, we can talk more about that. There's a required legal debt service reserve currently for utility revenues. So because your coverage is tight, you might not hit one times coverage. You might not hit one point two. Therefore, they might look to the reserve to make that payment. If you're not sufficient, you'd be in default on your covenant. And you'd have to raise rates, but in order to make that payment, if you were just under one times, for example, you'd have to use the reserve. So there's a required debt service reserve in the documents based on your relationship with the lender. You also have policy reserves in most cases for most communities that are a function of operating costs and surpluses. And so uh, the GFOA guidelines for operating um, uh, reserves are typically a minimum of two months of operations. You know, that's really kind of low and most places have three months of operations as a reserve. Some have one year's debt service as a reserve, as a target. Those are policy decisions. And those are different than the covenant that you make to a bondholder. And those are different than the covenant that you make to a bondholder or a bank.
Yeah, I think we made the decision. I think we, it was recommended that we not build, for example, the. The operating maintenance reserve would have the town stand behind that, that we're paying on the town to cover that. Should something happen and we run out of money, we have to make a quick increase in rates to cover that.
That's correct because the general fund was already subsidizing the enterprise funds. So it didn't make sense to put. Basically more general fund money aside for the enterprise.
Yeah. Okay, I, I think I understand.
Okay, the additional bonds test that at the time that you go to borrow. WIFA, for example, will want to make sure, just like you have an op- annual one point two times minimum coverage. They want to make sure that today you could meet one point two times in the future. And so that's where they're projecting revenues and projecting future debt service. From this new borrowing and what the maximum combined revenue and expenditures are to do that calculation. And that's where it's a little bit gray, how they're going to interpret your rate increases. So, you know, I'm waiting to, till you increase those rates to go back to them to say, okay, here's what they are. We've kind of had generic discussions and I do know their policy of when they will release the reserve. The service reserve on the utility reps, which is one and a half minimum.
Okay, thank you. I had a couple of other questions. I'd asked last meeting to rationalize the numbers because this is, I mean, dividing it up is. Important, but the numbers that go into this process as the revenue requirement. I've seen nothing on that comparing it back to the budget. We were a couple of months away from approving a budget and approving a CIP. What rev- how do those revenue numbers that went into this process match the numbers that we approved from? From the budget. I asked the same question last meeting.
Shirley pulled the information.
Mayor and members of council, Shirley Fox, Director of Finance. I compared the budget that we used and when we, I found the exact one from Kevin and I worked together to figure this out. So in mid-May was a preliminary budget presented to you and that's the one that Kevin initially used. The preliminary mid-May. So I compared that to the one that you actually approved in the end of June. And there are very minimal differences across revenue and expenses across Cave Creek. As well as the three enterprise funds. The one big difference that was important is that we had included that. Grant revenue of two point five million in that initial preliminary. And it needed to come out when we didn't receive the congressional discretionary spending. So. That's the material difference in revenue between when you approved and when Kevin used. So they're really line by line revenue and expenses across them. They're very, very small differences.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to make one more clarifying point and it might be helpful. And this is including debt. In Desert Hills, Desert Hills is supported, including its debt interest and, and debt. Is three hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. That is the budgeted subsidy to Desert Hills. From the general fund in this current year budget, three eighty-two eight hundred. Waste water is one million, three ninety-three, four hundred. So that's a subsidy, including interest and expense, debt expense for wastewater, one point three. And Cave Creek water is different. We, I had a good education from Carrie when I was new. About an hour explaining the water infrastructure fund, how it's funded through Spur Cross. And how that passes through to only Cave Creek water and only for infrastructure. So keeping that in mind, when this budget was written, we took the Cave Creek water. Capital projects and funded only those with the water infrastructure transfer except for forty thousand dollars. So there's eight sixty-two coming over from the infrastructure. But the Cave Creek water capital projects are eight twenty-two. So knowing that there was going to be a half year rate increase, or maybe all the projects wouldn't occur. I felt that we could have forty thousand excess and it would probably come together without spending more. On anything other than infrastructure because it was made very clear to me by Carrie that that's an infrastructure only for Cave Creek water. Only when it comes over from the water infrastructure fund. So our intent going forward is to always use if we need to. For Cave Creek mothers capital and not from the general fund.
And, and, and that subsidy to Desert Hills, that will be captured in the fund balance. So. So it won't get lost like it did for the first ten years of the water company. And we'll be able to see that and it will in- increase or decrease that reserve so that future councils can. We're not losing it. It's just that it's a bobble in our checking account. Is, is that a correct way to think of that? Or our reserve account, our savings account?
That's not how I would describe it. I would, I wouldn't describe it as a loan to Desert Hills if that's what you're intimating. I'm not sure what you're saying.
It's a lower reserve, a lower fund balance.
It, it lowers the fund balance in cave, in.
Desert Hills.
No.
In Cave Creek.
In, in general fund. General fund is supporting Desert Hills.
Well, that's cash.
Correct.
But on a non-cash basis, how are we tracking that subsidy so that, that if, if the councils decide to recover that? How will we know it's there and how we know how much it is?
Because it's in this year's budget. And it's, it's published in the budget as approved. On a bottom line, you can see that number at the very bottom. You can do it that way. I will also do that because I need to see that these rates work.
Yeah.
Because the goal is.
A lot of comfort that it sounds like it could get lost. The, the subsidy that we're giving, I mean, I want to, I want to track that and keep the visibility. They're, they're building a reserve fund, correct?
Who?
The, this, this process here builds a reserve fund in Desert Hills. Maybe Kevin's going to ask.
Yes, it does.
Okay. So in effect, the money that Cave Creek is subsidizing is going to their reserve fund. That doesn't make any sense at all to me. So why are we building a reserve fund and subsidy at the same time? I, I don't understand that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, let me talk with the town attorney about that. Perhaps we could have a more official. Action, say a resolution taken by council that would. Make it public or known that Desert Hills would, when they had the revenue would. Balance, you know, the general fund would get that money back, so to speak.
Okay. Thank you. Two more quick ones. Where did the three point six nine million dollars? Is that, was that on our CIP? The foot now financing three point six nine. Is that a CIP-ish on the CIP? Or is that just a new borrowing or is it a new project?
So it's going to be, Sean might be better to answer this than I will, but I'll take the first stab at it. So. I'm in twenty-four, twenty-five, we have a capital project on the Cave Creek Water System for a water treatment plant upgrade. So the three point six nine million debt issuance that we're showing there is intended to cover the cost of that capital project in that year.
And if I could just kind of talk generally, there was a comment. At the last meeting about why, why would we cash fund? Capital projects. And again, I think Jim and, and, and Tim could. As part of the rate structure. If we, if we show that in the rate study as being debt funded. It's going to affect your debt fund ratio and trying to keep that one point five percent. So. So we wanted to show you that this is the next project that needs to be financed.
Okay, yeah, and I'm, I'm perfectly, I mean, debt funding is the fairest thing and the best thing for our customers. Because instead of paying a million dollars this year, spread over forty-two hundred accounts, you're paying seventy, eighty thousand dollars. So it just makes, and the future customers pay their fair share of that improvement. So I'm, I'm all aboard.
But, but it's not factored into the, these rates that way. I mean, maybe Kevin can explain that better.
It, it's not in, the P and I is not in there?
No.
How's it in there?
Kevin, I thought we had cash. There was the project cash and we didn't fund every project out the entire five years.
Right, so the, we, we've got a mix going forward over the next five years where some projects are cash funded, some of the smaller projects. If it's a acquiring new meters or something and it's a twenty-five thousand dollar project and I'm just pulling numbers out of the air. If it was a smaller dollar value project, we were anticipating cash funding that. This particular project, the three point six nine million is a larger project to your, to your point, Bob, council member. It's going to have a useful life well beyond the immediate five years. We wanted to debt fund that so that. There is the intergenerational equity so that those that are coming online. Twenty, twenty-five, thirty years down the road that are going to be benefiting from this project are going to be paying for it through their rates. Through debt service. So that project is factored in as a debt funded project and we do have the principal and interest associated with that specific project. In the five-year financial plan that's been presented to you all. So we've got a, a, a mix of cash funding projects and debt funding projects in there as well. And, and to Carrie's point. In working with, with Mr. Strickland as we were preparing the financial plan and what WIFA was going to want to know. We included that project in there and the debt funding associated with it. So that we could show that once that new debt issuance comes online, we're still able to meet that one point five times debt service coverage ratio going forward.
The real question is, was that project on a CIP?
Yes.
And last one. There's, I haven't seen yet a multifamily base charge. Maybe it's on the other more extensive presentation, which I don't have. I gave back to. Teresa. So what is the base charge for multifamily?
So we've got the, the base charge for multifamily is going to be based on the meter itself. So if it's a. A smaller multifamily complex where it's, for example, a townhouse. Where the two sides are, are being served by one meter, a one three-quarter inch meter. They would pay the three-quarter inch base charge for that, for that one meter. If it's going to be a larger apartment building itself that's served by a two-inch meter or multiple two-inch meters, they would pay the base charge per. Per two-inch meter that they have serving them. So the, it's based on a, on the meter size and the number of meter serving that. Multifamily complex as opposed to on a dwelling unit basis.
You know, it's one of the changes that was made from the last presentation where we had a different proposed volumetric rate for multifamily residential. Now, we've, we've kept the category, it's table three point, uh, three twelve and three thirteen. But now all residential is the same multifamily versus single family residential, the same rate structure.
What, one of the principle, one of the principles in this whole situation is getting better water conservation. An apartment building with one meter and everybody pays the same amount, no matter what happens, does not engender conservation. And I, I talked to you before about, we shouldn't be. Permitting any new multifamily that does not have meters that, where the user pays for their share. So that we have a reason for people to conserve water. Is that, is anything needed to put that into effect? Is it in effect? Should the council do something to put that in effect where? Going forward, multifamily has visibility on who's using the water and they pay the penalty for overuse.
I, I, I'm not certain we need to do that because I've looked at the, we find it as multifamily with a single meter. And there's seventeen or eighteen accounts that have that. And, and surprisingly, most of them are very low water use. When you actually look at our, our per unit basis. So I'm not as, I'm not thinking it's as necessary. We can talk to those. We can talk to those specific users about how to conserve some water. But I was surprised when we actually did the analysis and showed that they are actually some of our water, lower water users in town is these multifamily units. And have a single meter going to the different units. As it comes up, it's something we can monitor better. That's why I wanted to keep it in as a different rate classification. Just so in the future, if something does happen, we can break that out. The new projects maybe we have asked that there'd be individual meters to the units. We have a number of those already in the system. We're actually classifying them that way just from a tracking standpoint. Everything through our annual reporting with Arizona Department of Water Resources. They actually have a multifamily category. So we're breaking that apart, but. What we heard last meeting is to try and keep residential uses the same. And, but we can definitely focus in if we see an issue, but right now we don't have an issue that I can see.
I, I'm more worried about going forward. I, the ones in the past, I don't care about, but yeah, we, I, I wouldn't go back to their grandfather. But with going forward, if somebody wants a two hundred unit apartment, I'd like to see individual meters so that we know we're getting.
Yeah, and that would go towards our water policy where we've allocated a certain volumetric limit to the individual units themselves. So if someone wanted to bring a large unit in like that to, to meet our policy that actually individually have to individually metering. So that, that forces it, so the two thousand, uh, twenty twenty-one water resource policy would, would direct in that way.
Councilman Sova.
I haven't spoken yet.
Comment here by. Vice Mayor and other council members and. I think to sum it up, I think we've got to look at providing our residents that are on sewer and water. Something under the KISS philosophy, keeping it very simple. And there's a voluminous amount of information, as I said before, that we have. Trying to interpret it and come up with something that's simple. It's not easy, but we need to come up with something to show the residents like. And I'll take myself as an example. The first question is, how much is my bill going to go up if you impose? Or some other rates? And as I say, in my case, it's about a three hundred and fifty dollar a year increase. In my water and sewer invoices. That takes into account. The fees, the taxes as they increase when the rates increase and the base rates, which is twenty-nine percent. And in my opinion, a resident is going to say then. Is there anything that the town can do to take funds from some other area to reduce that number and help me? Uh, and then is there anything that we can do or that you can do? To mitigate that? The answer is quite honestly, no. When you look at all and listen to all the comments from all our consultants. And all our experts. There really isn't. It's, I, I, somebody mentioned it's pretty well fixed. And then I agree with the comments relative to the rates going up, base rates and then down and then back up. I think it needs to be level even so that it's easy. For a resident to understand. What it is we're trying to do. We're going to raise, we're proposing raising your water and sewer rates. And as I say, so they, they need to see something on a simple piece of paper on our website, our town website. Uh, that's easily understood and that they can plug in their own numbers to see what it's going to cost them. And then to talk about the fact that there's not much we can do to rectify it. You know, don't forget, we're losing, what's the number, five hundred and forty homes that, uh, on our Cave Creek Water System. That we're in. Carefree that, you know, and there's fixed cost. I think Mr. Morris pointed out that. You know, we've got to spread that fixed cost over five hundred and forty less units. So it needs to be pretty simple. And now whether we can do that before the next meeting. Catherine had a good point of, of listening to the residents and could we. Uh, have another meeting prior to or pre. The meeting that we were going to vote on it, I think is important, but I think to go over all this detailed stuff, nobody at home. Nobody sitting in the audience is going to. We're going to want to know how much am I going to be paying more? Is it going to last? And is there anything that can be done to mitigate it? Those are the questions we need to answer. And I think if we do that, it'd make all our jobs a lot easier. Nobody's going to like an increase. But if you explain why it is and that. You know, it really can't, there's not much movement in it wiggle room and we're going to have to do it. We're going to have to learn to live with it and. We're going to have to learn to, uh, live with it and, uh, in order to have a quality, uh, well-running sewer plant. Water systems. Thank you.
Councilmember McGuire, I thought you'd been sitting there, I hadn't seen you waving at me or anything, but go right ahead.
I did a couple of times, yeah, I, there've been some excellent comments here. I appreciate that, uh, uh, Councilman Sova has revealed that he's using about, uh, two thousand gallons per month. Uh, we're using, uh, less than five thousand gallons per month. And I know there are people sitting on the council that are using a lot more than that. But it seems to me we should be aiming for people using a greatly reduced amount of water. And I would, I, I think water needs to be priced strategically. And what I mean by that is that we have things coming up such as the twenty-one percent cut from CAP. It'll be mostly the farmers that absorb that, but it's still a significant cut. And, uh, I think I'd like to see a much stronger incentive for people to cut back on water. If I'm looking at these numbers correctly and I'm looking at the tiers on page eleven of twenty-one. Uh, if you've got a base fee of somewhere around fifty dollars. And you're using as much as fifty thousand gallons per year. Uh, that fifty thousand gallons per year is only about a third of your total bill. And it seems to me that the water usage should play a much larger percent in terms of, uh. Allowing people to cut back because that person is choosing fifty thousand dollars a month. Uh, he, when he's cutting back, he's not really saving a lot of money when you look at the meter costs. In that case, it would probably be a good deal more than the fifty dollars because he's probably got a larger meter. So I'm, I'm not, uh, pleased about that. I also want to, uh, echo what Councilman Morris was talking about that. I'd like to see this considerably simplified, it seems to me that we're making a lot more categories and making this a lot more complicated than we need to be. And people may have difficulty in terms of understanding that, but I, I just don't think we need to make it that complicated, uh, that, that complicated. I think that the major effort on the part of our consultants has been to bring a balance between the income. That we are generating and the needs, and I think they've done an excellent job there. But again, that it's not addressing a, an extremely important point. And at this point, we're using somewhere around twenty thousand, uh, acre feet, excuse me, two thousand acre feet per year. In Cave Creek and we're looking at a limit of not a lot more than that, maybe we're using, I'll, I'll take a, a very rough figure. Seventy-five percent of our allocation, well, as the town grows, uh, that's going to be a, a very difficult ceiling. And I think the only way we can really get a handle on that is by having a much larger differentiation in the cost of the customers. Between those who use a lot of water and those who don't use very much water. So that's, that's my, uh, concern here, so I, I'd like to see us being much more aggressive. In terms of, uh, this, the, the incentive of people to cut back on water use, I think as we go forward. That's going to be an, an elephant in the room. That we've got a certain amount of water, about two thousand, roughly two thousand acre feet allocation. And we're using most of that. And we've got to find some way to be more aggressive in terms of making sure that the large water users. Uh, are, are paying a great deal more and have a much larger incentive to cut back on water use, thank you.
Mayor?
Mayor? Yeah.
Question for Kurt, uh. As I recollect, the large water users are very, very, very few. Uh, the, the number of people that are in that fifty thousand or thirty to fifty thousand dollar, or not dollar, yeah, category. Uh, it's like ten or twelve or eight, is that, is that true, it's a very small, small number?
I don't have that number for you, uh, Mayor Council, uh, Kevin might have the spreadsheet, see, or easily.
And, and Congressman, uh, excuse me, Councilman Sova, I just picked that number of fifty thousand, you can take the number of twenty thousand to thirty thousand. We have a lot more people in that situation and again, no matter where you are. Except for Councilmember Sova who's hardly using any water. Uh, and we're using relatively small amount of water, uh, I think that the, uh. The rates need to be priced, as I say, strategically so that we have the larger water users, no matter where they are. Uh, they're not up to fifty thousand gallons, I appreciate that, but they may be in that range, twenty thousand to, uh, thirty thousand gallons. That's an awful lot of water for a household to use. Thank you.
Yeah, I will say that that's certainly true, um, to answer Sean's question, that the, the vast majority of your water users are in the, are in the lower tiers as opposed to. Um, as opposed to the upper tiers. Um, and it's, it's a good point also that the, the rate structures we have now is not as strong of a conservation message as it could be. Um, Shirley might want to cover ears a little bit on this one, but, um, to the extent that we, right now, we have the balancing act. Uh, we're trying to get fifty percent of our revenue from the base charge and fifty percent from the volume component. Um, which is something that Shirley, as the finance director, is going to really like, the base charge gives us that more stability in the revenue stream and, and quote unquote guaranteed revenue source. Um, that was something that came out of the last study, it's something that we carried forward with this study. Um, to the extent that we want to make changes to that ratio, we can certainly do that, so we could come down a little bit on how much revenue we're, we're generating through the base charge. Um, that would give us more flexibility on the volume side to, to play with those tiers a little bit. Um, so that we do send a, a stronger conservation signal that we do have the higher rates for those, for those higher tiers, but again. Um, there's going to be the trade-off there with the revenue stability, which is why I said Shirley might want to cover her ears on that, on that front. But that's certainly something that we could look at if that's something that council would like us to examine.
And I, I'd like to poll the council, the other people, uh, do you feel that we need to be a great deal more, uh, aggressive? In terms of allowing, getting people to cut back on their water use, particularly concerning where we're so close to our allotment. But, uh, uh, each individual, please.
Mayor? When, when we initially, um, set the rates, when we bought the water company. Um, there was about a ten percent reduction in water usage. That was the best, at least current conservation, uh, uh, measure we had. Uh, Tom, I'm not inclined to, uh, uh, poll the council at this point in time, uh, since we're, this is discussion only.
Yeah, well, maybe some reaction from a, a few other council members is fine and rather than polling.
For, further comment, Mayor? I'd like to follow up on the comments, uh, Vice Mayor made, uh, uh, Councilwoman Roy A. and Ron. Um, getting the information to the citizens is extremely important. Waiting for more than three people to show up at a council, that it isn't going to do it. We can put stuff on the town's website, how many people really go to, to the town website? How many people are PC literate? Um, in my former life, having faced this marketing, uh, um, how do you introduce your product? Um, I'd be willing to work on a committee. Maybe one or two members of, uh, council with the town manager and, uh, how can we get the message out?
Is, we need to hire our communications person because he or she will know how to do that. Now, that's not going to happen for at least a month, so that puts us in that predicament. But, uh, the emphasis is on getting the professional in place to help us communicate our, our messaging. And, um, so until then, we're on our own.
Can the Cave Creek Corner publication play a part in helping to contact more people? I don't know what the, uh.
Variety of newsletters and social media.
Yeah.
Do our best with the staff that we have in place right now, like, and I'm speaking from what we did for the, uh, water form for tomorrow night. Um, we got it online, we got it on social media, we did flyers, we did, uh, you know, a sandwich board sign, so, um. There are ways to reach our community, uh, but it has to take multiple paths and, um, we're pretty much aware of how to do that.
Mr. Mayor, um, we've found with utilities in particular, we have addresses for all of our customers. And a direct mail, independent of the, a water or, you know, any kind of utility bill, is a separate direct mail has been most effective. To bring it to their attention and to provide the website and the information, uh, so we intend to do that for sure.
And, and one thing that we're really missing, I'm sorry, is, uh, the email addresses of our, of our water customers. We need to be able to proactively communicate via electronic messaging. And it's cheaper than direct mail.
And it's unfortunate the timing right now because it's when we would be doing informational mailings, it's at the same time that. Our mailbox is going to be inundated with mailing from every single political person, um, over and over.
Yep, I, I saw it a couple of years ago, an extremely effective way of getting information across and it was done by, uh, our friends in Carefree. When they made, when the political people there made a decision that something had to be done. Which was breaking away their water system from the Cave Creek water system. They held essentially a big forum and they had people who were knowledgeable, some of them. Yep, of the evangelical mode, but reasonably, uh, knowledgeable and they had specifics. This is what we plan to do, this is why it needs to be done. One of the things in here that's awfully hard to explain is why it needs to be done. That, you know. One time there was a candidate running for, uh, office in Cave Creek who said it takes a, a year to, to become a council member. Because it takes that long to understand what you're doing. In some respects, a year probably isn't enough, it takes longer than that unless you've had previous experience. But I, when I sat there, I sat in the, uh, in the audience, when the mayor and other people in Carefree. Explained things and did it in a succinct, concise, not overly, um.
Technical.
Yeah, technical way. It would, I thought that the people that were in the audience were all going to go and take that information away with them. And start talking to other people.
Well, we could very easily do that on this issue.
You know, I, I'm not saying that that's something that we have to do. But sometimes that kind of thing can be useful, especially if it ends up on, uh, YouTube. I look at a lot of our crap on YouTube, I also look at Carefree's crap on YouTube. Uh, because they fight with each other a lot more than we do. And, um, but I think that, uh, it's something that could be considered because we, you know, I'm not, I, I, I never. I didn't mean to say to you that, uh, we shouldn't be talking to people, telling them, I think it's critical. I understand what the rates are about, I understand why they need to be done, I understand a lot about this. But I have twelve, thirteen years of experience to draw upon. Uh, not everybody in town has that and, um. You know, it's not everybody in town also that is even on the water system. Those are the people that we really need to get to, the people that are on the water system. Because they're the ones that we're talking about paying more money. Uh, so that's just a suggestion, I think we should, uh, take a look at considering something like that and, um. And, yeah, just a suggestion.
You know, I want to comment on, uh, what Ernie had to say about all the information, the political. I'm not going to use the word that's going into our mailboxes, but, uh, if people know what's going into their mailboxes is going to cost them or save them money. Directly, that they're much more likely to pay attention. I think Catherine has, uh, made quite a number of good suggestions in terms of communicating with people. But I think between trying to keep it simple, which Ron talked about, that's very important to me. And trying to use a variety of the most effective sources, I think these are things that will communicate to the citizens.
Thank you, Catherine, there's nothing more, there is a public comment on these issues and there's one person sitting here that.
We have one other, um, issue related to the study that Sean needs to cover.
To what?
We have another issue related to the study that Sean needs to cover.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council, um, so on table, uh, three dash nineteen, the pro, proposed wastewater rates. Um, something that we did in the last study is actually we created a grease tap monitoring, uh, fee. And then when we did that, we actually set that and we set it as a volumetric fee. We're rethinking that, that actually it's not, uh, we've looked at, the fee's been in place now for a little bit, um, and there, it's not, uh, completely equitable. So we're looking at actually with, it's not in the table right now, uh, we're trying to do it before the, the study gets finalized in a month. Um, which would be to look at doing more of a flat fee type of structure, having it volumetrically, we're realizing is, is, it's not the best way to, uh, to get to the funds. And what we're trying to do is capture, um, instead of grease trap monitoring, also, we want to relabel it, it's part of the, what we refer to as the pre-treatment program. So these are all the interceptor devices that are required on the, on the collection system to make sure that things don't get in the system that we don't want in the collection system. And they do include things like oil and sand interceptors with the way it's been, uh, cap, uh, captured right now and last, the RAS rate model, we can only do grease interceptors. So we want to actually make it a pre-treatment fee and we're looking at doing it sort of more of a flat fee. Um, so that, again, right now, it's based on volumetric, uh, the volume, um. The, uh, different users are actually, they get a different rate on their volumetric for the wastewater loading they're putting into the system. So we're trying to separate that function out and, and just capture the cost of running the pre-treatment program itself. So that'd be something that, it's not right now, it's something we just noticed. Um, and we actually want to bring it forward before we finalize the report and we'll, we'll let council see what those final results are. Uh, but we'll remove it from the volumetric calculation and have it more as a, as a fee-based calculation.
That'll be ready for the nineteenth?
Yeah, well, not the nineteenth, it'll be ready for the final reports too, on the nineteenth is we'll do the notice of the intent. Uh, then we have thirty days after that to finalize the drop, the report for the hearing, so that's what we're trying to work towards. We might get something done for next week or so, we're looking at some numbers right now.
So, so the pre-treatment program you're talking about is going to be other fee for restaurants?
Uh, it'd be restaurants, but it's not just restaurants because again, sand oil interceptors, right now, we're not collecting fees for the sand oil interceptors where we have automotive. Um, uh, companies and they're actually part of the program and we actually do monitor them also. So that's one thing that was, it fell through the cracks and we're trying to correct that. And again, by having it set as a volumetric, it's not really fair, it's more based on the accounting of, of us doing it rather than the amount of flow that goes through the system. Um, it's making sure that they're keeping up with their paperwork, so it's different functional, uh, thing, that's why it's a fee, it's, um, not a, a non-volumetric fee, uh, seems to fit better.
It's a flat, okay.
Yeah.
All right, now can we go to public comment? All right, call his name.
I have no.
You don't have any?
Oh wait, Danny?
Danny, please step up to the microphone because I can't hear you mumbling over there. And, and congratulations on the extra, uh, extra, uh, half hour of people drinking yesterday when you have a crazy game.
That's why I can barely hear my voice.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Mayor, um, Dan Piacorio, one of the owners of, uh, Harold's Corral, um, up the road. Couple of things, uh, this is, uh, Catherine made a very good point, this was brought to our attention from a bill that we got and working with Shirley. And my partner Marie does more the billing, couldn't make it today, so I'm filling in, so bear with me. We realized, we just got paid a, a charge over the last six months, an average of five to six hundred dollars a month on this BOD monitoring, uh, thing that the town has put on our bill. So there was a statement early that, you know, there hasn't been a sewer increase in thirteen years, but for commercial businesses that has this rate. That's a sixty-five percent increase in one year. Uh, one of the suggestions I made earlier about raising annually, so you don't have this bite of a twenty-nine percent increase on water and sewage. That's something you guys should take in consideration. I remember Mayor Vince Friends C. all these years ago saying, hey, we're going to put five point five percent or one percent, uh, increase on sales tax in Cave Creek. That's going to save you guys from paying for water. So a lot of things I heard today is about business, uh, high volume and unfortunately. And unfortunately, when you have a lot of business at a restaurant, there's a lot of water usage for many reasons. So I see a great more impact going to some of our commercial establishments. But I want the council to remember this sales tax that was supposed to go away to help with this funding of the water company or sewer company back in the day, has generated a lot of capital. And to have the businesses now take additional burden when you're talking about water usage. I would ask that that reflects and what we're paying, helps, helped subsidizing with those, those, those taxes that were put on those many years ago. Couple of questions I have, and again, this is all, one more statement. The idea of educating the public, well, we need to do that. I don't know why the town didn't have a committee when we're talking to business owners and residents. Hey, what are you, what are your expectations on this? We used to do that many years ago on things that are major. And we know the water crisis is coming and I've done analysis with friends of mine in the golf community, trying to support them on water. So I'm somewhat familiar with state restrictions are come. But we should definitely have that committee. We should definitely have the graphs showing what other communities are paying for water, water comparison. We should definitely have graphs showing the increase that's anticipated, estimated from what you guys are proposing before that, that first call. And I think that'd be very helpful. And I think there will be more than six people show up or three people show up for that. So a couple of questions I have, we're just listening and taking notes was how efficient is our town water company sewer company doing? How do we compare to other town water rates? Are we really counting on businesses subsidize even more of the, some of the fees for our, our water? I already told you about the sewer not going up, but in commercial with the BOD monitoring, which to me doesn't make any sense. Back in the day when they added this, when they put monitors on grease traps was to capture how much BOD goes into our sewer system. And at that time, there was five hundred homes hooked up on, on it. My partner Bill made a great statement. You, you help pollution by dilution. With only five hundred homes on a sewer, on a water back in, or sewer back in the day, there was no dilution. So there was a need for this pre-stap monitoring. And now we have nine hundred homes. How's that really affecting the BOD comparison? Cause that's why we were charged before on BODs. Now it's a monitoring rate that is quite significant for businesses if you go by percentages. Yeah, just, and how much, how much both commercially and then residentially, what impact will be would be very helpful. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there are no more. Oh, David, didn't you get your questions answered? Are you going to step up and tell us how we ought to be doing it?
No, no, no. I think that this is, David helps here. I think that the, the.
A little closer to the microphone.
The revisions are definitely closer to a better result for, for average and less than average users. I'll actually get a rate decrease from this. So go figure. I mean, it's, my house will pay less because of the reduction proposed at the two fifty on the revision from the three oh nine. But, and I wouldn't do it this way. I would have more charges. I would drastically increase rates starting at the ten thousand to twenty thousand. I would be keeping the new rate suggested before today, which was five fifteen instead of the three seventy-three. I would drastically increase twenty thousand to thirty thousand gallons per month residential rate usage. I would drastically increase the two cent raise between the thirty thousand and fifty thousand gallons per month. And again, I would drastically increase the more than fifty thousand. It's, it's, it's ridiculous. And I mean, I almost think that we've become way burdensome on the rate payers who are more than likely required to have an inch and a half service or an inch and a half boosted or a two inch service. It's not like they could pick and choose that. There's probably a fire flow requirement requiring their line, their meter size on some of these instances. So I think there was progress made definitely, but I would still tweak it a little bit myself. I think in providing the information, the goods, the good idea, the, the good news is, is that you will be decreasing the amount of information you will be likely trying to express to somebody. Because we're going to get rid of some of this proposed stuff when we go to transmit the information to the public. Also, the sooner you can get a calculator live online, the better off you'll be. That is a surefire way for everybody to do their own homework. And if you put that online, there's no reason for anybody to be surprised. Because it can do the tax, it can do the gallons and people know about how much water to use. Is there a way to lower costs? Yes, there is, Mr. Silva, Councilman Silva, there is a way to lower cost. It would be, well, let's, let's say maybe, but we have to do a test. We have to discuss logistics. We have to look at the possibility. We don't have to put this three, three plus million dollar investment into water purification in twenty twenty-five. But we can't get there until we can get across from our existing challenge. And our existing challenge is our innate bias. And our innate bias is, is that we can't let go of water treatment. We have to get past that. We have to. We're too small of a water company to have this much energy going into the treatment process. Think about it. Epcore, Desert Hills, Cave Creek, Carefree, Scottsdale and Phoenix. We're still out at the end of the cul-de-sac. But if we all work together with all these entities and we're being drawn together. We'll find out tomorrow how much we're being drawn together. Because the water sources are drying up. They're going away. We're going to be forced to work together. The sooner we do, the better off we're going to be. I would definitely recommend the five-year rate structure approval this time. I think that's brilliant. I would rather see a four percent known coming rate increase every year, the next five years, than to have the uncertainty of somebody politically thinking they don't have to raise rates. Because it's election time. And I would definitely recommend that we reduce the dependence, the subsidy, I'll call it, on the Spurcross Ranch half cent sales tax. That, that would probably be a better use, being used environmentally for the causes that we have that are environmental preservation and drill maintenance instead of just trail building. We've actually maintained the things that we build. So thank you for your efforts. Thank you for today.
Well, you know what? This is interesting. All three people who showed up are, are going to speak to us. This, thank God it wasn't a hundred and fifty.
Jeff Rickett, Desert Hills Water Advisory Committee there. And in this rate study, I, looking at what Desert Hills is going to be impacted. It feels like Desert Hills, and this is certainly something that I think.
Can you get a little closer to the microphone?
This is certainly something I think everybody in Desert Hills needs to be aware of. You know, this is twenty-nine percent base increase for the Desert Hills guys. That seems a, a pretty big jump. I understand that the Desert Hills system needs this infrastructure. Because our, our system is kind of broken. But we're also faced with January one, maybe a rate increase for Desert Hills. Plus the water cutback, because I understand that Desert Hills, the water allotment that was purchased for Desert Hills is NIA water. Which actually will be affected by the twenty-one percent CAP cutbacks that we're going to be facing. So as far as the calculator thing goes, I think that has to happen. Mail something with a QR code or a link in the mail. They can see how much water they used, pump it into the calculator and say, hey, this is what it's going to cost me next month. And I would like to know between the water, this is something maybe Sean could answer. Between the, the, the water that the wells provide versus how much is supplemented? How much is going to be cut back from the NIA water? That seems like a big giant, big puzzle to put together, try and figure that one out. But just so that Desert Hills would have an accurate deal of, once the water cutbacks happen in January and the rate increases happen at the same time. They could brace for that. And yeah, I think, like I said, the, the calculator, I think a lot of folks here agree that the calculator would be a, a super thing. That's all I have.
Thank you. We're back to council. It is now an hour and forty minutes into this meeting and I believe that we're probably done.
Motion to adjourn. So are we going to tackle any of the capacity fees?
You want to discuss that with the Councilman Monachino, the capacity fees? It's. Hmm?
It's part of the agenda.
Yeah, all right.
I'll withdraw my motion to adjourn.
Okay. Go ahead, Reg.
Ask your questions and.
Okay, let me get organized here. I'll start with topic of appreciation. And in the documentation on the previous study, the engineering firm E and R and RS means and other folks in the industry attempted to determine the cost to purchase or construct assets today. Okay, replacement assets purchased today. But the depreciation argument is these assets are not new and are not being purchased today. Well, yes, they are. And if we have to buy equipment or incur a cost, it's new cost. And unless the engineering firm intends to replace the utility with used parts, which then of course will be depreciated. I don't understand the depreciation argument. It's certainly not GAAP accounting. And it, it, it really doesn't make much sense to me. We're going to try to determine the replacement cost of utility. Replacement cost will be a new utility. I'd be open to any other views. Hearing none. Can I take that as agreement? I'll, I'll continue.
This is the standard method of doing it, Reg.
Yeah.
Help, will, help me. Why is it standard?
The depreciation is also at current value, my understanding. You're, you're valuing, it, it's like a, it's like valuing a house. There are three methods to value a house appraisals. This is an appraisal technique. It's not meant to duplicate the actual, but it's one of the three appraisal techniques for, for real estate. And this is what engineers use. It was in the two thousand thirteen study. It's been in a number of other studies at Townstone.
Go ahead, Kevin, if you have something to add.
I, I was just going to say that at any given point in time, some of the assets that are in the ground are going to be old. So we're, we're trying to bring them up into today's cost if we were to replace them today. But not all components of the system are being replaced, which is why we're being, they're being depreciated. But to the extent that there is a component of the system that is taken out and it is replaced by a new asset. Then that new asset is reflected in the fixed asset records. The value of that asset reflects the fact that it's new in the fixed asset record itself. So we are, in some ways, it's a combination of new asset and depreciation. Depreciated assets in the ground at this, at any given point in time. So it's not all completely depreciated, but it's not all brand new either. It's some combination thereof. And the process that we went through with the, the replacement cost new approach using the NR is to bring those assets up into today's standards. And then to the extent that they are older asset, we're depreciating them. If it is a brand new asset and there's no depreciation included in the fixed asset records, then that asset's not being depreciated. So we're trying to come up with a fair value of the system.
I seem to recall in Exhibit G, there was a litany of new things and the associated depreciation. One of them I made a note of was new water meters. Okay, a cost, new water meters, forty-six thousand dollars. The depreciation applied against them would mean that they would be only eighteen thousand. How do we get depreciation buying new water meters? I don't understand that.
I would have to go back and see what year those assets were placed in service. The, if it said new, new water meters in the, in the name of the asset itself, that could have been a labeling issue on my part. And then it should be labeled more correctly and not say new at the end of it. I can double check that. But if, if it was a twenty-two asset or a twenty-one asset, then there should not be that depreciation on it. But if it was installed earlier than twenty-one or twenty-two, then there would be some depreciation to it.
The entry was for twenty-eleven, so it's, that's assuming that all of the water meters were installed in twenty-eleven?
Correct.
I don't know, that's, anyway, okay. Not making much headway here on depreciation. I'll move along to loan forgiveness in the analysis. My view of it was that the town owned the water company. So it owned the water company, it owned the general fund. And if it took money out of the general fund for assets that were clearly for the system. That's like moving money from one pocket to another pocket. And I think taking out the nine million just because there was an alleged loan forgiveness arrangement. I was on council then and I questioned the fact that there was, oh, the general fund has to pay back the utility. Council never made a policy decision. They never issued a resolution. It was never an ordinance. It was just moving money from one pocket to another pocket. I don't see why that is deducted from the new replacement cost.
So on that aspect of things, so part of what we're trying to do through the capacity fee is that new development is reimbursing existing rate payers for the investment that they've made in the system. So to the extent that that was a general fund that made the purchase or fronted the money to begin with. If rate payers had paid back that loan, all of it or part of it, then we would include the portion that the rate payers paid back to the general fund in our capacity fee calculation. In this instance, the assumption is that that nine million dollars loan was forgiven. So rate payers did not pay that nine million dollars back. So the money that came from the general fund to make that purchase came from sales tax or some other general fund revenue source, not from the rate payer. So if we were to include that nine million dollars in the capacity fee calculation, new development would be reimbursing existing rate payers for an investment that they didn't make. It came from a source outside of, of the rate payers themselves. That's the logic that we're using behind that one.
But the money didn't come necessarily from rate payers. It came from excise tax, sales tax, revenue sharing.
Right, in which case the rate payers didn't make that investment because the money didn't come from them. It came from an outside city source. So if we were to include that in the value in the calculation of the capacity fees, then we'd be repaying rate payers for something that they ultimately didn't pay for to begin with. It was paid for from a different source.
No, the money, the money would be paying for. No, the money, the money would be paying for assets that were purchased for the water company.
Yes, they were purchased for the water company, but they were purchased by somebody other than the rate payers themselves. That's the distinction that we're making.
Isn't that, isn't that codified in state law, Kevin? This is a state law you're referring to now that, that. Yeah, this is state law, Reg.
That's correct, Councilmember.
The, the home builders put this through our friends, the home builders. And that's one of the things they put in there. It's right there in the statute.
The only statue I saw was nine dash five eleven. Which says. The, the fees will be just and reasonable. There's no other calculations in.
I think there's more statute than you're reading. There's, there's more to it or something.
Okay, continuing while I'm on a roll. Let's see, debt was issued for repair and replacement. Okay. There again, moving money from one pocket to another pocket. Water rates were specifically not increased to pay the debt. So I don't see why that that. One point eight million is excluded.
So the idea behind excluding that one is that that debt is going to be paid through rates going forward. So if we were to include that in the capacity fee calculation, then we'd be asking new development to pay for that debt in their capacity fee itself. And then once the new homeowner or new business or whoever it is, is paying the rates going forward, would be paying that debt service a second time. They'd be paying for it through the capacity fee that they were charged upfront. And then they'd be paying for that debt a second time through the rates themselves. So that's why we exclude it from the calculation.
So if you, you're assuming that water rates specifically were assigned for that debt service. Or the debt service could have been paid from the general fund from sales tax.
We're making these, we're making the assumption that the debt service that has been paid through utility rate revenue is being excluded. If it's coming from a general fund source, then we would not be excluding it.
Okay, I'm suggesting it came from the general fund. I throw that out. Final point. Future capital needs. Okay, I agreed with that. Future capital needs for the system, eight point seven million fine. Well, my calculation is that we come up with the replacement cost new seventy million. That's a lot better in my view. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I, I just want to be on record as saying that I, I have a problem with the, the cost facilities anyway. I, I don't think that the replacement value is correct. Today's, in my recollection is the twenty thirteen. Had hundreds of millions of dollars as replacement cost. I don't think it's gone down since then. So that, that is the only criticism I have of it is I do not believe that. And when it's. When lines are a hundred and fifty dollars per foot and think of the number of lines we have in town and the, and the plant and the meters and all the money we put into the system. I just can't believe that it's that low.
Yeah, the two thousand thirteen water study came up with a number of. Hundred, between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and thirty million dollars for replacement cost.
I'd point out that Jackson, Mississippi is having a bit of a problem now. And they're looking at billions to replace their system. I, I mean, how would you? It, it just doesn't meet the test of reasonableness to me.
What are we going to do about that? Take another look? Kevin?
Yeah, we, we can certainly go back. I'll, I'll work with, with Sean and Shirley and make sure that we do have all the fixed assets. That are in the ground that need to be in the ground. To, to Councilmember Morris's point, in looking at the cost of a foot of pipe today. Potentially another option that we could consider and consider looking at is I'll get with Sean and we can identify how many miles or how many linear feet of pipe are in the ground today. And what would it cost to replace? All those miles linear feet, whichever metric we want to use at today's current rate. Sean, if you and I can figure out what the current rate for a linear foot of is and how many linear feet of pipe you have in the ground. Then we could incorporate that into the calculation as opposed to increasing the, the cost of the pipes based on the N R index. That might be a better reflection of what it actually would cost to replace the pipes today.
Referring to twenty thirteen, it has a linear feet of pipe and it has their calculation method by pipe diameter. I'm sure we've added pipe since then, but that's a good place to start.
But that would change all kinds of other numbers. That would adjust all the other numbers accordingly if.
But, but it's not only pipe. It's pump, it's membranes, it's processing, it's, it's the entire replacement of the system is what we really want to get at.
Do we know what we're doing?
I think so, Mayor Council. Yeah, we'll go back and look at those old reports. We do have better minutes now as we can look at the numbers that were used back then. The system has been added to since two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and we'll look at those base assumptions from that timeframe. And come up with some better numbers for right now, what we think the cost per linear foot will be precise.
Vice Mayor, do you have a motion?
A motion to adjourn is being presented.
All in favor. All right, bye y'all.
Thank you.